We are live.
Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on July the 26th at 9:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols, please.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Hillary Washington, Special Assistant, standing in for Terry Lucas, our board liaison at Cal- at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org, under People, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda only. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you. Back to you, President Haynes.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, well. Hildegarde Aguilanado.
Present.
Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Here.
Joshua Elizondo. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Carrero. Julina Grande.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Eliana Koleakas. Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rollins.
Present.
Roy Savazian.
I'm here, but not a great internet connection.
Okay. Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Yulia Tarasova.
Here.
Las Villalobos.
Here.
And Joseph Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, Hillary, it looks like Board Member Anderson just joined.
Uh, Darius Anderson.
Yes, sorry for being late.
Not a problem. Thank you, sir. All right, President Haynes, we are ready for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, um, Mr. Anderson, Trustee Anderson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for letting me do it today.
Of course.
I missed out yesterday.
Thank you. All right, with that done, I am, I'm gonna just talk just a couple of minutes, just a couple of moments in my president's report. Thank you so much. We almost have a full house of Board of Trustees and, and I'm appreciative of you spending some time. This should be a relatively short meeting. But I know, I know Jenny is going to give us a report on the legislative and the, and the budget. But I do know the hard work that has been put in for us to be, to continue to meet as a college. And I know the hard work that our staff has done in these last few months. And so I just want to say thank you. This work goes on when we're not in front, when we're, when we're not together. And, and you, and Calbright is a, is a shining light on how community colleges are, are gonna have to change in order to meet the needs of our students. As faculty, as staff, as executives, we are doing this work where some of us haven't met each other. And we are still connecting as a team. We're still connecting to do the work in unison, in our way. And so I, I wanted to bring that forward because I think this group probably more than any other sort of is beginning to understand the power of technology and the power of getting things done, even though we're not all in the same room. So I'll just, I'll end with that. It's, it's, it's become very clear because I sit, also sit as a trustee on, on a community college board and, and so a Board of Trustees. And we, we continue to be able to work on those issues. But we are farther, we're not, we're, we're farther along as a result of the pandemic, pandemic than we've ever been. But we are still struggling when how to best use technology, how to best engage, how to best support students and each other in this medium. And this medium is not going to go away. So we have got to get better and, and Calbright is leading that way. So with that, I will conclude my, my president's report and I'm gonna move to the CEO report and I believe that our Chief of Staff Carmen Drummond is going to do the president's report for us.
Yes, thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I'm joining you this morning to share the CEO report in President Menon's place. At the end of June, the California state budget cycle concluded. And I'm pleased to share that Calbright received full funding this year in the budget. Throughout the entire budget process, members of the legislature and their staff were incredibly impressed by Calbright's growth, by our vision and by our clear momentum. Our, our enrollment grew by 120% this past fiscal year and we conferred our 100th certificate in the spring. We developed new programs, implemented and improved student support services and rapidly iterating to meet the needs of our students and the changing dynamic of the state's labor market and economy. This year, the Senate supported us in their budget and we are included in the legislature's joint budget proposal from the start. Additionally, AB 2820, which was introduced by member Medina and sought to dissolve Calbright, was not heard by the Senate Education Committee and expired with the fiscal year. And so this summer, as has always been the plan, we are stepping on the accelerator. Over the course of the next few months, we'll continue to be laser focused on hiring and expanding our organizational capacity. Most notably on our technology team, which builds and maintains all of our learning platforms and provides support to students, faculty and staff, as well as across our learning and instruction and student support and services team. We made exceptional strides this past fiscal year and we'd like, and I personally like to thank you for your continued leadership and partnership and the entire team here at Calbright. And, you know, most importantly for their dedication and hard work as we build this new college from the ground up. So President Haynes and Board of Trustees, this concludes my remarks this morning.
So thank you so much for that report. I, we're gonna, we're gonna move into closed session. We have one item in closed session. On the agenda, it's the conference with the labor negotiator. And we expect to return from closed session in approximately 30 minutes. Do we have any public comment on this item? Hillary?
Sorry, no public comment.
Thank you. So I believe that there is a, a, another tab that we, we go out and, and do that one and come back in. So I'll see you on the other side. So Hillary, can you tell me that we got everyone back yet? Have we got them?
Right now. Still coming in. Okay, President Haynes, we're good to go.
Thank you. We have returned from a closed session. No action was taken. So now we're gonna move to the consent agenda. A section three, and, and do any trustees wish to remove an item from the, from the agenda, from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? I don't see any hands raised on that. I assume that's a no. Then can I get, is there any public comment?
No, there is no public comment.
Okay, then can I get a motion and a second to, to move the consent agenda?
If you can hear me, this is for Grande. I move approval.
I can hear you loud and clear. Then can I get a second? Was that Aguilanado seconding?
That's right.
All right, then, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Hildegarde, Hildegarde Aguilanado.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Julina Grande. Julina?
Aye.
Thank you. Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rollins.
Aye.
Roy Savazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Yulia Tarasova.
Uh, no, she is not with us now.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. She is not a voting member. Sorry about that. Las Villalobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, President Haynes.
That motion carries. Um, so we're now into the action items, action agenda. 4.1 is the Anthology Application Administration Services for Human Resources Finance and Payroll Platforms, and we will have Brendan O'Callaghan presenting on this item. Brendan?
Uh, good, good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and members of the Board of Trustees. So Brendan O'Callaghan, I'm Vice President of Marketing Communications, External Affairs and interim capacity, leading our technology team. And so I'm bringing today a contract for your approval. And the reason it requires board approval is that we have an existing relationship and contract with Anthology there. They're implementing a couple core systems for Calbright, finance, HR, and a student information system. And so the, the amount already exceeds presidential approval. And so this is why I'm coming to you for, for this specific one, even though it's, it's a lesser dollar amount. Um, and so what we are is, actually, this is wonderful progress. We are, as we move away from the support by the foundation, we are building our own systems as we should be and are implementing a finance system through Anthology, which should go live here at the end of the month. And so we're, we're actively working on testing that, getting, getting everything up and running and ready to go. And so as part of that, what we'd like to do in this contract ask for is for support hours for the, the remainder of the fiscal year, basically, from Anthology to help us with any updates that come up, any configuration that we need to do after launch. And, and should just provide some additional support to us so that our, our tech team itself can be focused on, on the other mission critical work that they're doing. So with that, I, you know, I'm seeking your, your approval for this contract.
Thank you. Are there any member questions, trustee questions? Yes, Member Savazian.
Thank you. And let me know if my audio is not good. A couple of questions about our Anthology contract in general, although part of this isn't directly related to this particular amendment, but the, the student information system that they provide for us, I imagine affects academic matters, including grading and rosters. I wanted to make a request that we involve the academic senate, who are on the front lines and see how those systems affect students on a daily basis. And I'd be happy to hear about how we're already doing that, but that's, that's a request. And then a couple, a couple of minor things on the scope of work. The document said proprietary and confidential, and I guess at this point, this kind of contract can't be confidential. And then I just wanted to ask, it looked like this was something that, that the vendor wrote up. And I just wanted to check to see whether they were responsive to edits that, that our staff had requested.
Yeah, so those are, those are all great questions and I will also have, have my colleague Justin step in here if, if there's any, any areas that I'm missing. To, to your initial question, yes, absolutely. It'll be important that we involve every part of Calbright. Students, students are the center of, of what we do and the, the implementation of the student information system is not, uh, it's not, it's not happening tomorrow. It'll be a long-term process and will require collaboration across the college. Especially as we, as we figure out what, you know, how exactly we want to configure it and how exactly we want all the modules to be working. So your, your point is well taken and well received. We will absolutely do that. To your, to your larger question is, is Anthology has been a partner with us for, for the long term. They're, they're working on the, this specific contract is about our finance system, but they're working on an HR system with us and then the student information system. And so they are, you know, absolutely receptive to, to back and forth with regards to what, what we are asking for. And you'll see in there, there are a couple of areas where, you know, it's, it's on Calbright to, to request, you know, specific configurations and such like that. And they, and they will figure out how, how to actively implement those. And then there are other areas where, where they are going to be the expert and can, can, can solve a problem, you know, quickly to, to our benefit. So, so yes, the short, short answer to your question is it is something that they pulled together, but they were also receptive to, to our, our needs as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing no other hands raised, is there any public comment?
No, President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion and a second to approve this item? Contract?
Also move.
We have Perry moving. Can I get a second?
Second, Savazian.
Savazian seconds. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Hildegarde Aguilanado.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rollins.
Aye.
Roy Savazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Las Villalobos.
Yes.
Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. The next action item is 4.2. It's the authorization of expenditures to and approval of the agreement addendum with Stack Nexus. And we have Tamika Connor, who's going to be presenting on this item.
Thank you, President Haynes and Vice President Costa and members of the board. This is an addendum for an existing relationship that we have with Stack Nexus. They have been backfilling our IT support for our CRM program, which is on a different learning management system platform. And so they have assisted us with program enhancements as well as helping us track real-time data. We needed to resolve some, some data tracking issues in June. So we exceeded our fiscal year contract of 95,000. And so we're asking for the board to approve an outstanding invoice of $28,650 for a total of 123,000 for the 2021-22 fiscal year. We're also asking the board to approve an additional amount so we can keep our relationship with Stack Nexus in support of our CRM program of 100, not to exceed 150,000 for the next fiscal year of 2023. And again, this is in support of our faculty, our students and our staff and really helping us see real-time data with our student progress in our CRM program and to also support any additional program iterations and enhancements throughout the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Are there any questions with regard to this particular item? Member Savazian?
Uh, sorry, along the lines of a previous comment, you mentioned it involves the learning management system. Can, can you clarify that? And then how does the academic senate feel about this learning management system? I gather they're the ones that be regularly using it.
So it, this is a program. It, it's a, it's a, it's actually a program that students are taking. And it's, it's a career, a career pathway, actually. But please, Tamika, explain, explain the, explain that portion.
Sure. Our transition to technology customer relationship management program is hosted on MyTrellhead, which is a learning management system that is supported by Salesforce. And our faculty are very much involved in the launch of this program. And we've also completed two program iterations or program enhancements to the learning management system and the curated content on the system.
Okay, um, are there other questions? I don't, do you have a follow-up question, Roy? I just want to make sure you, you got your question answered.
Not yet.
Okay, not yet?
Okay. Can I provide greater context?
Uh, maybe I'll just follow up offline.
Okay, perfect. All right, all right. Other questions from, from, from trustees? Don't see hands raised. And then is there a public comment?
No, there is no public comment.
All right, so this.
Yes.
Can I just make, would it, would it be helpful to, for a member, say your last name, Roy?
Savazian.
Savazian, the Salesforce certification, were you wondering what the program is about? Tamika did a really good job of talking to one of the adult, I mean, Ms. Connor, one of the adult education organizations out here was interested in Salesforce certification. I had a chance to learn about it. I didn't know if that would be helpful for you.
Thank you. That sounds good.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm sure that Tamika will, will reach out to you and you are absolutely welcome to reach out to her because these are, these are training programs and certifications that are being requested by industry and by employers. And it's, it's a way to get into and have documentation that you have skills relative to what they need in, 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 in the work that they're doing and the industries that they're going into. So, um, did I ask if there's any public comment?
Yes, there's no public comment.
Okay, then, then can I get a motion and a second on this? On this item?
So moved.
Okay, so Anderson moved and I heard Williams, second. With that, can I get a, a roll call, please?
Hildegarde Aguilanado.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rollins.
Aye.
Roy Savazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Las Villalobos.
Yes.
Joshua Williams.
No, Joseph.
Me, Joseph, sorry.
Yes, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that motion carried. We have 5.1, which is a, which is an information item, legislative and budget update. And we have Jenny Johnson, who's going to be presenting on this item. Jenny?
Thank you, Pam. What my presentation? Great. Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and Board of Trustees, Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations. Thank you for this opportunity to provide both the legislative and budget update. And my presentation will focus on our engagement this past legislative session, reflections from our meetings, followed by our plans for summer and fall engagement. Next slide. Legislative and budget engagement. Our focus this season, or this session rather, stood on four pillars. Proactive and authentic storytelling, trust building through candid dialogue, active listening and consistent engagement and follow-through. And while I'm the one presenting today, it's not a secret that this work is a team sport. So I'd like to thank Danny Mae Santiago and Jessica Howard from my team, who divided and conquered our meetings this year and who were instrumental in the preparation of these meetings and follow-up. I would also like to thank Brendan O'Callaghan, who worked with us throughout this entire process. During this time, we juggled testing positive for COVID and providing one-on-one caregiving for our immediate family. So big thank you to them. So the legislative landscape, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Governor Newsom for his continued support of Calbright College, which was reflected in this year's budget. We met regularly with the administration and Department of Finance to answer questions and update his team on our progress. Following Governor Newsom's update, our teams quickly pivoted to legislation in the form of active opposition to AB 2820 by Assembly Member Jose Medina, which would effectively shut down Calbright and budget discussions with staff and legislators. It was admittedly disappointing to see another piece of legislation focused on shutting down our college. Nevertheless, we pushed back hard and focused on our narrative. This effort required countless hours with both legislative staffers, but also with our Calbright colleagues who assisted in responding to the technical and budgetary questions asked of us. Thank you again to my colleagues who provided responses for President Haynes and President Menon for preparing for these budget and policy hearings and ultimately testifying. Michael Younger for making yourself available for all of these hearings. And of course, to my colleagues on the executive team and your respective teams to answer these budget and technical questions. I know I'm going on about this, but this was really a team sport and everybody had their respective portfolios. So it's really important for, I think it's a highlight for the college to see all of us working together. I'd also like to thank Michael Stewart, who drove up from Monterey to attend and speak out against AB 2820. Michael, I know that was a long day for you, driving there and back, and you didn't complain. It was a long legislative day and you stayed with us the entire time. So thank you. Denise for submitting a letter in opposition and prior to Denise, Ashley Odell's leadership and connecting on budget and legislation. Of course, Anya Elder for taking my calls on budget and legislation since taking on her leadership role with CSEA. Our next focus was, of course, messaging. We introduced ourselves to new legislators. We reintroduced ourselves to those legislators who we were still trying to build capacity. And we met with legislators who admittedly simply didn't want to meet with us, providing progress updates over the past year. We also provided them the numbers of Calbright students within their district, not really resonated for them. It was helpful to remind the legislature that we took every audit recommendation last year and to relay our notable momentum, which includes partnerships with the UC Irvine School of Education, a growing group of supporters, substantial improvement growth and a more robust process for selecting future programs. All of this is, of course, a cohesive effort by our teams across the college to iterate and better serve our students. Coalition building. Next slide, please. While we focused on engagement with the legislature, we simultaneously engaged with and updated our supporters, a number of whom are new this year. Again, a special thank you to our supporters. The list is provided here. Next slide. We appreciate their support and look forward to exploring new ways of engagement with them in the coming months ahead. And I'd like to just pause here for a second. And this was another team effort from a number of team members while we're in government relations. And everyone had different connections about who could partner with us, who can collaborate. So when you look at this list, it's, it's a, a variety of community-based organizations. We're thrilled that we're partnering with SEIU, United Healthcare Workers. You'll see a handful of community colleges. You'll see Cal Competes, a wonderful research Arm and Higher Ed, Bay Area Council. We're really excited about this list. It's very intentional. And while we want to grow it, we want to be thoughtful about how we're partnering. So for, for us, success is not volume, but the quality of engagement. Okay, by the numbers, next slide. And we held over 110 meetings this past legislative year. Each legislator, staffer, policy and Each legislator staffer, policy and budget committee received a comprehensive packet of Calbright materials that spoke to updates, program pathways, partnerships, and more. And one example, next slide, is provided here. And this came from, again, Jessica Howard. It's a nice visual that kind of shows where we started and where we're going. And the legislators really appreciated a nice one-page visual. So yes, they appreciated a hard copy. So hard copies were made for every legislator. Throughout the legislative process, 35 coalition letters were shared with the legislature. And then next slide, ultimately the outcome, right? So the Senate ultimately supported full funding for our college. And as you'll recall from last year, this is different from last year. We were in final budget negotiations and ultimately the Senate supported Governor Newsom's proposal to support full funding of Calbright. And we were not in final negotiations. So again, building momentum. And then finally, AB 2820 that I mentioned, legislation by Assembly Member Medina. Well, that bill died in the Senate Ed Committee. It was never heard. So that's our update for right now. We're really excited about it, but I'd be remiss of like, where are we going next steps? Well, I think before we look at next steps, we really have to assess what have we learned before we go forward? And here's some key findings that we gleaned. As a new institution of higher ed, one-on-one meetings are critical to build a necessary understanding of our mission and ultimately garner support. We learned that storytelling proved more effective in person, and this could be for a variety of reasons. Legislators thanked us for our professionalism and follow through as it changed their perception of Calbright. Admittedly, a number of legislators still struggled with their experience working with President Menon's predecessor. We listened. We were both consistent and persistent. We didn't take any meeting for granted and we did our best to respond to follow-up questions. Some meetings were five minutes and others had to be rescheduled three or four times until a legislator ultimately met with us. We didn't complain and against a focus on our narrative. We were reminded by supporters that some opponents continue to put out false information about Calbright. And that's a somewhat tough one to take, especially as it was being pushed by fellow community college faculty and campuses. But we didn't bite and said that while we can't speak to our opponent's ill will, we will always correct the record. Legislators share that they want to meet with and learn from students, something we've said that we would be sure to follow up on. Legislators want to see labor outcomes and meet with our partners. And for still, for some legislators, competency-based education, something, is something that remains a little difficult to appreciate. And that wasn't a negative. They were just being honest. I think we're having more nuanced conversations with legislators. And a few legislators actually asked if they could work with us to maybe go through some of the content to better understand what the process is for a student. So next steps, summer, fall, and winter strategic planning and engagement. So while the legislature is still on summer recess, we are already planning a schedule of meetings concluding at the end of session. We will be attending policy convenings. I was just in San Bernardino last week attending a policy convening. And with an election year, we have a number of meetings to make with newly elected officials. On the federal front, we recognize the importance and value that can come from federal engagement. And we will be working on researching and preparing an RFP in the coming months ahead for your approval. This concludes my update. Of course, I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
So Jenny, thank you so much for that update. I, I think it's, some of us are not always as close to all of the work that you've been doing and those relationship building. Meetings have been critical to getting people to know the real story around Calbright and to dispel some of the other meetings that, that they've taken from, from other constituency groups. So again, I want you to know and to share with your staff on, on, on our full behalf, our indebtedness to the work that you've been doing and we know that it's paying off. And so with that comment, I have some hands raised, so I'll just start with member trustee Shaw.
Hi, thank you for your report. I was just curious, for the people who just absolutely refuse to meet with us, was there a theme as to why?
Thank you for your question. You know, we can only assume, we admit, we admit that folks are busy. So we get that and we know that folks have to reschedule and we get that too. There was just a handful, trustee Shaw, that probably took three, four, or five calls, but we stayed persistent. And I think, again, credit to Danny Mae Santiago, who just came over from the legislature, who was very persistent. And when folks would say, well, we only have 10 minutes, she said, we'll take five. And I think it was that surprise, if you will, that folks were like, they're going to just take five minutes. And we said, we'll take whatever we can. And I think for some of it, we actually, I didn't put this in the presentation, but a couple legislators said, you know, we heard you guys were crazy. We heard you guys were just nutty. You know, this is, I like this narrative. I like this one-page visual. You know, you guys got your butts kicked the first year. I wasn't wanting to meet with you. You have a lot of work to do, but I'm excited what I'm seeing and I want to talk to students. You know, we had more nuanced conversations this year. Last year was so much the focus on the audit that it was hard to be proactive. We had to be really responsive to the audit and we, when we should have. But now we're being able to expand. Again, I share this based on all of the team's work because we have so much more narrative to share, right? We have so much more to speak to CRM. We have so much more to speak to all of the program offerings. Well, what are you doing with UC Irvine? I mean, thanks to all the teams at Calbright, I'm able to speak to more things. That's wonderful. So we're building trust. And as we all know, in all of this work, trust is earned. So for the most part, the conversations were really good. There are some, again, that are not going to be in support of our work, but we're respectful and we go to the next member. Let me go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Aguelnaldo.
Thank you, President Haynes. I just wanted to, to thank Jenny for this wonderful presentation and to piggyback on member Shaw's question. When you were giving your presentation, the slogan that just, the refrain that constantly repeated in my mind was, nevertheless, they persisted. I can only imagine how frustrating this, this work has been for you over the course of the past two years. And I just admire how you guys are persisting through these tough discussions. I'm specifically thinking of two things. One was a presentation that President Menon gave us earlier, possibly this year, where she spoke of an avatar of a student who was very representative of the cross-section of experiences that I think a lot of our non-traditional learners experience. And when we heard of that narrative, I think it was very impactful. Simultaneously to that, I'm thinking of a board of governors experience where our former student board member, Colm, had talked about his friend who was trying to get internet access by staying on the, the front steps of a local fast food restaurant. And I think many of us were moved to tears. So I'm wondering if we can continue to engage our actual students, perhaps those in the district, as you pointed out, to be effective, to engage in these conversations with the legislators who may not be fully on board yet. So are we identifying some folks who can possibly come along with us to those difficult conversations and contextualize what, what benefits Calbright is giving in, in real-time experience?
Yes, great question. So we did, we're working closely with Ted, Ted Lys team to identify some students who would feel comfortable and really more than comfortable but confident engaging with legislators. And it was partly the timing as far as availability of our students, again, having a sense of giving them agency and a platform in which to engage, at the same time being respectful of their schedules. We know a number of our students are juggling quite a bit and legislators have a very specific amount of time. And we wanted to be thoughtful. And so we made a decision that, given where we were with the, the challenge of timing, that let's get through the legislative session. And when legislators are not jammed, let's have a more relaxed conversation because we really want to build it up for success. And I don't mind if I get jammed and have a 20-minute meeting that's five minutes, but I want the students to have as much time with the legislature. And so that's where we're hoping. I'm so glad you brought that up. It's actually on one of our action items, engagement with the legislature. And that was both sides of the aisle, which is said, we like talking to you, Jen, but all respect, we want to talk to students. And I'm like, oh, no, please do. So that's something that we hope to do. But most likely, that won't take place until after, after the ledge session, so that we can get everybody in a relaxed place and have enough time. But thank you and duly noted.
That makes absolute sense. Thank you.
Trustee Perry and then trustee Williams.
And I just wanted to say, you sort of presented a master class in how to move public policy. So kudos to you. And it's been an uphill battle. So it was really impressive. As Hildy pointed out, persistence being the keynote and confronting misinformation with, with facts in a quiet and persistent and graph, literally graphically demonstrated way. So, and so congrats. We've all, how hard you have all worked to make this happen. So to have that bill killed and to have full funding is a huge accomplishment. So I hope you can take a moment to breathe and, and celebrate what you've done. And to, to Hildy's point, I think coming back and underscoring this with stories, because as you well know, in the end, it's that narrative that resonates with legislators. So I look forward to seeing what you come up with in the fall along those lines. And again, take a moment to breathe and, and celebrate what you and the team have accomplished.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, being a new person, this process has been extremely frustrating and incredible to watch. I've never seen a legislator involved with a college this way. And so I, I just want to say kudos to the leadership team because I know there are trustee members here who were involved in behind the scenes and, and, and working on this. And then to Jenny's team. So a member Medina is from my area. He's from the Inland Empire. Former trustee, very passionate about the issues and Jenny, you know, reached out multiple times. And I can say that every contact that I gave her, I think she talked to and they all gave positive feedback. I'm a part of the Inland Empire Trustees Association. And I think probably all of the CEOs from my area participate in our meetings and they just, you know, gave good feedback. And I know I saw them at the county fair. They had a booth there engaging with students. And so it was just really cool to see them in the community. And so I just wanted to give you all kudos for the work and good job.
Thank you. Trustee Epstein and then trustee Anderson.
Thanks. Yeah, I want to add my voice of congratulations to, to the team for their outstanding work. It's really, I feel like we finally turned the corner or dug ourselves out of the hole that unfortunately this board put you in with our initial CEO choice. But it seems like we're, we're finally, you know, reached the top of that, of that hill. The, the one thing I did want to say is that we're going to miss Senator Leva, who I know is, is termed out and hope we can find another champion in that, in that role again. And she was unbelievably great from day one, from we first started talking to her about this. And just want to thank her publicly and, and, you know, I'm not sure Calbright would exist were it not for her. So I just wanted to say that. The other thing you said that I, I was a little surprised by, I didn't realize that this was still going on. But you, you indicated that a couple of community colleges were actually lobbying against Calbright in, in the legislature. If, if, if it's politically appropriate to say, I'd like to know who they are. I'd like to hear them exposed publicly for, for their efforts to try and kill this college.
Okay.
I'll leave it to your discretion over whether or not.
And I thank you so much for Senator Leva. Senator Leva, you know, is also from the Inland Empire and was a huge champion. Strong, very active in the labor movement, Chair of the Senate Ed Committee, and really believed in this. And thank you for bringing that up. I've thanked her so many times, but I can't do it enough. And what we want to do is, we want to get, of course, we want champions, but we want Calbright to no longer be controversial and folks just want it in their community. They want it rural, urban, and suburban. So I still want the champions long-term for Calbright, but also want this to no longer be controversial. And we just are like, yeah, this is good policy. I want this to help folks in my community. But we are very appreciative of her. We, we look forward to looking with the committee, the new legislators, legislative leaders in both the Assembly and Senate. There's going to be a number of vacancies. Regarding the community colleges, it's not like I'm trying to, you know, again, blast anybody, but you know, the bill was sponsored by a couple of organizations. And there were a handful of community colleges that supported them. And I'll leave it at that. What I would really focus on is the breadth of our supporters, which are researchers, a handful of community colleges, community-based organizations, workforce development boards, business, the organizations that come together. And we have UHW, SEIU, United Healthcare Workers. And I like, at the end of the day, to say, if I'm looking at supporters and opponents, we have the full circle. Business, labor, community-based organizations, workforce development boards. People are getting stuff done at the local level and that's who I would ultimately want to work with. So I'm going to leave it at that. Of course, the list is on the website that they can pull up, but that's where we're going to keep going. It's a great question that trustee Epstein really, really want to focus on is going more granular. We're going to hit it hard this summer and this is a team effort under Michael Younger's team. Again, all of the execs and their respective teams, but we have a number of partnerships that are not yet public that we can't bring to you, but we look forward to. And again, reflects the diversity of folks who are getting stuff done in the state.
All right. A member Anderson, did you still have a question?
Yeah, Jenny, congrats, like everybody else. Amazing job and, you know, really, really, really great. Quick question, because I, I go to tons, you know, within the, not the community colleges, but within the legislature, where are the pockets of opposition still after all your great work? What members' offices, what senators, assembly people? You know, and it's obviously public record who supported the bill and who didn't and who's driving. But who are, who are those ones that, you know, we have to be concerned about?
Well, I think at the end of the day, and I'm not trying to be flip with this, we don't mind nuanced conversation and we have a lot of work to do. I mean, I love President Menon when she says, we're iterating, here's where we are, here's where we're going with this. I love when Michael Young, or Stuart presents and the, and the different team members about how do we improve? We don't mind having those tough conversations, but it's the no way, no how, this has no place. You guys are competing with community college. So it's those legislators who have no, who do not believe in us no matter what and who think we're a waste of dollars and who won't engage, engage with me on public policy discussions. And so for that, I don't want to out them out, but I'm, we're happy to have the nuanced conversation. I think one of the, your board members was asking like, where we come from, the importance of narrative. A number of us have gone to community college. I went to Yuba Community College. I was a Bagram recipient. We know what these narratives are. We are, these are our friends and family. This is not abstract policy for us. But we, you know, we're hitting it hard, trustee Anderson, with those that'll unpack issues with us, who raise good questions and we can't always answer everything that day if we come back. But it's just the ones that are like, who just want to say, you know, you guys are a waste of dollars. You don't deserve to be here. And with that, we try to push back respectfully. We don't talk ill will of our opponents and we just speak to policies. So we are a community college. We're, we're doing our best to meet with as many people as possible. But I think for purposes, I'm not going to out anybody, but it's all, it's all public.
We have one more, we have two more. Member Hall, you have your hand raised.
Thanks, President Hayes. Getting back to Darius's question in a way, is a better strategy to increase our roster of supporters? And knowing that their time is limited to, to focus our time on expanding support? Or is it also good to try to keep going back to the ones who were opposed to us? Or is that a waste of our time in a way, at least in the short term? In other words, garner as much support as we can. And if, if they're going to oppose us and we can't change their mind for the next year or so, is it better to use your time just to expand support?
No, it's a great question and I hope I'm not trying to come off. I mean, you're, you guys are asking all my questions, all the questions about how we're looking at the six months, next six months of our strategic thinking. I'm going back to President Menon. We've done so much over the last year. I mean, I just think about CRM, for example, who's almost 300 students. I think about our faculty, who, their narratives about how, what they're learning from their students and how they're sharing that with us, our counselors, what they're learning, our partnership. You know, we didn't have that the year prior to speak to. The state auditor found that we were non-duplicative of our sister community colleges. So I have a lot to work with. It's just still challenging, I think, a number of things with the pandemic. We're having better meetings this year than last year. We're building more momentum. I'm able, and I have a team now, thank you very much, two people to join me, that we can go out and divide and conquer and have more granular conversations. The, the piece about student engagement, that was a theme for a number of legislators on both sides of the aisle. So I think we have a lot to work with compared to last year. And I, and again, for all of our teams, we're continuing to move along that ladder. So I don't know if it's number necessarily as far as supporters, it's just the quality and what are you doing with them? So it's, and I would ask the same question in my old job in the legislature and the governor's office. What is the engagement? Why is it impactful? Why are you aligned? How is this going to help the students matriculate and get out and help with jobs? Like, what does that look like? Again, I mentioned I was in San Bernardino last week. It really matters to folks if we're in their communities. It's not enough to just do Zoom. So while we're in online college, we need to be out in the community and really listen a lot. As much as we spoke, and I know I'm speaking a lot today, we listened, listened, listened to what concerns were. And some of the questions were really valid.
Thank you for that. One more. Thank you for that. One more, and that's trustee Williams.
This would be my my last one. And I appreciate your 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 comments, Jenny. I got my push just a little bit, just in relation to member Anderson, because thinking about a potential for having a recession and just a range of things happening in the future. My community organizing background, there are power mapping tools. And as trustees, we do have a role in advocacy. And so what I'm hearing member Anderson saying is if you arm us with the data and correct me if I'm, you know, misspeak member Anderson, if you arm us with the data of who are our oppositions and you give us the right talking points, then, you know, when we're out and about, we can fulfill our role as advocates for the district. So I think it is important, maybe not in this format, but there are, you know, Deloitte has a Deloitte has a good format, scope has a good format where you show specifically, here's the issue. Here's your supporters. Here's your opposition. And I think we should commission a mapping of it just so that we can, you know, stay.
Brendan listening. Yes, I was so glad.
Provide it with the board and some training on
Yes.
what you want us to say and.
Thank you so much. Brendan, if you want to ping on this one, because we've been working behind the scenes on this one, trustee Williams. To do just that, a number of you have expressed interest. And so I'm going to ping it over to Brendan, who had a little bit more feedback on that one.
Yeah, thank you. I really, really appreciate the question, the sentiments. I you're you're right. To answer your question, you know, quickly. But yeah, I mean, I'd say as we as we look into right now, we are, we're given the gift of a little bit of time to to really kind of build on the traction that we've had over the last year. And I'm hoping to to develop more materials for all of you. And so so that when you go to your local, you know, local events and are meeting with people, you you have a couple of top line items about Calbright. You know, where where our enrollment is, what our diversity numbers look like, you know, the fact that we're up 120% this this year. You know, those are, those are notable things. And I want you all to feel, you know, equipped and and ready. Ready with those and ready with updated information. So so absolutely to, you know, to summarily answer your question. That that's something that we want to look at and and explore and and identify the the best ways and the best ways for for each of you to to have that, you know, at the ready.
Thanks, Brendan. And then finally, I think I mentioned this earlier, we will be traveling quite a bit. Coming from a farm town myself, and again, just trustee Williams, we were in your region last week. We want to be mindful of the different communities. And so we hope to, if we get invited to events, we're going to old school, we're going to drive up and down the state and go out and visit with folks as many folks as we can. So to the extent, and if you are interested in meeting with the government relations team, please just reach out to me offline. It's always great to meet with folks and would really welcome the opportunity. So if there aren't any other questions, thank you so much for this great opportunity. My colleagues are listening. Again, group effort. We really appreciate the robust feedback. And if anybody has any questions offline, always feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
So no more hands raised. This is by far the one of the best discussions. I I think that staff can see just how excited and how engaged that this board is and wants to be an asset in this work. And so Jenny, I'm really appreciative that you pulled this together to share because it's really, it's good news. With that, this is just an information item. We have one more, which is a 5.2, which is what we normally have on the agenda, which is we reports, contracts and purchases. Carmen, you're going to do this. I don't know that. And if there's any questions that the board has relative to those contracts, obviously, this is an opportunity. So Carmen.
Yes, thank you, President Haines. I also want to echo the appreciation and thanks to our government relations team and leadership by Jenny Johnson. So thank you so much and to the incredible Calbright team as well. So thank you, President Haines, Vice President Casa, and again, the Board of Trustees. There were 18 contracts executed in June of 2022. And a summary of purchases in June totaling $106,697.18. And I opened it up if there's any questions.
Don't see hands raised. I do see two. Sorry, I spoke too soon. Okay, so the first one, I'm going to go with Jolina, trustee Grande, and then trustee Shabazian.
Thank you, President Haines. The I hope everyone can hear me. I was just wondering, when we were on the consent agenda today, there were some personnel contracts that were executed. And I see that one of them in particular is duplicated here as executed contract, but for a different amount. And I was just wondering, when we're looking at these contracts and their services, like teach assigned discipline, at what point do they end up on the list of executed executed contracts? And at what point are they individualized consent agenda contracts?
And Jolena's, I can actually speak to that. Are you speaking to Ron Deu?
Yes, yeah, that was the one that drew my attention.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that question, trustee Grande. So actually, that contract in particular is actually going through an amendment at the moment. So we're working with our procurement team. So that individual ended up actually applying for a full time role here at the college. And so that contract is going to be termed out at the end of July. And as you'll see with that offer letter, it would begin on August 1. So that amendment you'll likely see on the next go around at the at the August board, meaning meeting where you'll see a a term out that that particular contract.
Thank you, Carmen. And then for the ones that are listed as services, teach assigned discipline. I'm getting the idea those are faculty contracts. At what point are they on the consent agenda as an executed contract versus on the list of executed contracts here?
Yeah, and I'm I may have to turn that to Marissa, who can probably speak a little bit more about that.
Sure, absolutely. I think, and I think if I'm getting the question right, and Jolena, you can tell me if I'm not, so we'll answer anything else too. I think when it comes out as an individual is anytime it's over the authority that the president CEO has. So and so anything that's over 100,000 and then anything that's over our bid limit as well is handled differently. So anything that's under that, and all of these are contracts that are under, I think the bid limit now is 99 or something higher, but they are all under that. And so they are contracts that are executed as signed by a GDA. And these are just individual part time contract faculty roles helping out versus if it's over a GDA's limit or if it's any individual that we're bringing forward as a full time, you know, tenure track faculty member, of course, that also is coming out in a different section. Okay, so.
Sort of. I think you almost said what I think I heard. So when it says something like the service is teach assigned discipline, this would be an adjunct faculty, but not a full time faculty. So they're listed as a contract rather than under our personnel items.
Yes, and we, I think, don't have official adjuncts. We have all contract faculty, but yes, they are all part time, under 20 hours a week, under, you know, 75% or under of the the year total, et cetera. They are contract part time. You know, they might be a subject matter expert or they might be, you know, someone who is helping our in a course with our full time faculty. But they are not our tenure track full time employees. So I know that can be confusing too, because we refer to our CBA and our agreements with our faculty as contracts as well. So it's a different, it's on the finance and procurement side of the house versus our employment side of the house.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers.
Trustee Shabazian.
Thank you. Just a couple clarification questions. There's an item for about listed as 315,000, which is a dollar amount that was larger than I expected for something called CBEESC slash strut. Do you mind reminding me what that is? And then also there's an item for Verizon that's blank.
I can speak, excuse me, to the CBEESC. That was actually approved by the board at the June 15 board meeting. And so that's just now showing up on the actual contract support. So that was approved by the board. And then for the Verizon charge, Jenny, we've got our manager of payroll and accounting on the the phone, who may be able to speak to the the Verizon charge.
I'm not even sure I see where it is. Good morning, board members and trustee. Oh, I do see it there. So it's T-Mobile and Verizon. Verizon Wireless does our mobile phones for our higher ups and exec team. And T-Mobile does our hotspots. It does appear to be blanked there, so I will make sure that that is updated before it's finalized and and recorded on our journals in the back, because there should be a line item dollar. There, you are correct.
Thanks for clarification.
Thank you for catching that. Any other questions? Seeing none, any public comment?
No, President Haines, there is no public comment.
Okay, well, we're getting very close to adjourning. There are no constituency group reports for this month. So the the only next item would be 7.1, and that's the public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
No, President Haines, no one has any questions.
All right, then the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete and we can adjourn. And I want to thank everyone for your participation, your active participation. Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. I've saved the transcript. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too.